Corey.
Recording in progress.
All right, this is the Warren Planning Board, Monday, January 13th, 2025. It is 7:16. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT on Zoom, on Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. If you're gonna speak, state your name and who you represent or who you're with, or you're just a citizen. And if everyone could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is an A and R.
Good evening, I'm Joe Lebec. I'm the surveyor that prepared this plan before you tonight. It's a pretty simple plan. It's near the intersection of Southbridge Road and Cronin Road. It's a single lot plan. The speedway is created so she can, this Monsieur Sol Robinson can build a house eventually.
Okay.
Approximately six and a half acres. Has about 400 feet of frontage on Southbridge Road and 586 feet on.
Did everybody get a chance to look at that?
They did, yeah.
PDF?
I saw the PDF. I just wanted to locate the plan.
This is the lot where the Pepsi trailer is, right?
Yes.
Good. That'll be gone, hopefully.
No, no, I don't think so, right? Because the Pepsi trailer's on.
It may not be Pepsi. There is a trailer.
Yeah, it's Pepsi.
Pepsi. Every time I get home, I'm like, I need a Pepsi.
Why?
Probably over here.
Pepsi's over here, I think.
Yeah.
Because it's really like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. No, it's pretty.
I thought it was too.
There was a boat somewhere here, right?
The boat's gone.
It shows a blue map.
Yeah.
Or a road view.
So where are you for that house?
Here. Right by here.
Okay. So back for, back for Wolf Road, so.
Yeah, honestly, this has been a couple of years of lots grown. So I started working with her because there's so much ledge up. First, you want to build up here.
Yeah.
And there's just too much ledge. I mean, that's why I checked my stuff.
Okay.
Cars go too fast.
Yeah, this will be why.
That'll be nicer.
So she decided to actually, they moved the boat because that's basically the house.
Because the pella winds are right here, right?
Uh, yeah, but further.
Up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not too, too far from that one.
Yeah, the only, I mean, like you said, it's just, this whole area is just so much.
Okay.
Hopefully she can get her back there. We'll find out.
Because this slopes down, right?
It does.
Yeah.
See the corner?
Yep.
And that's the boat.
Yep. Okay. There's a boat. Boat's right there.
Can you see the Pepsi?
Oh, you can see the Pepsi. You see the Pepsi truck, yeah.
Nope, there's true. And she's. Big grace.
See, Pepsi.
Pepsi.
We want to have him say, welcome to Warren.
Yeah, we want to say, welcome.
Yeah.
So this is pretty straightforward. Six and a half acres.
That's cool.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's just going to come off Southbridge Road.
So Drew, we're looking at the A and R. Do you have any questions? You gotta unmute. Oh, I should announce also that.
No, I did look at it online. I don't have any questions.
Okay. So I should announce that Drew is participating remotely on Zoom. All right, so is there a motion to endorse the A and R?
I make a motion, we endorse the A and R for Southbridge and Cronin Road.
For a second? Second? All in favor?
Ed Long to give an eye.
Eddie Bellis eye.
Drew, do you want to vote?
Looking eye.
Richi Hacker eye. Okay.
So since Drew is on this, she'll need to sign it. So do we want to just hold and sign at the end? And I can let Joe know when Drew has a chance to sign it?
Okay.
Good idea.
Oh, because you're not going to be able to leave with these. That, yeah, that's fine. You can.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have your contact, Joe.
That's true, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
So Drew, can you come in and sign?
Um, I can either send my husband to pick up the stuff or I can probably maybe go over there, maybe.
I could bring, Drew, I can bring it to you.
I'll, I'll talk to Laura.
I can bring it to her.
So Ed can bring it to you also.
Okay, no problem.
That's fine.
Okay. And then, um, no other A and Rs, right?
Does anybody in the audience have an A and R that they brought with them?
No.
Nope, we're good.
Okay, number five, discussion regarding non-landowners applying for special permits. Okay, so where did this come about? Because of, um.
He has a bogged property.
Yeah, last meeting we had chatted with.
With you guys, right?
With Andy and Ron, who are back. Andy is looking to potentially purchase the property.
Yeah.
Um, and would need to get the special permit. But he's not currently the property owner. So this sort of, it was a discussion of, you know, is it.
Yeah.
Sort of, how's the board feel about someone, you know, applying for and potentially receiving a special permit? Sort of in anticipation of, of a purchase? If that makes sense.
Well, the, the application actually says the applicant can be different from the owner. Underneath it, I don't have it right here, but it does have applicant, whatever, and then owner if different, it says on it.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, as long as the owner is aware that it's happening.
Right. I think the applicant would probably have to be authorized by the owner. There'd have to be something in writing.
Yeah.
Saying that I authorize Johnny Jones to.
Right.
Do this on my property.
I mean, in this case, you're both here, so I don't know that we need a letter. But can we have it in the minutes and stuff? But, yeah, I mean, I guess.
No, I think we might need something in writing.
Yeah.
With the special permit.
Okay.
Just for records.
Unless you end up buying it then, right? If you just buy it, then you just apply.
You're gonna apply.
Well, I wouldn't buy it unless I can get it.
Okay.
That's, so, one of the Andrew.
Oh, that's right. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Right, okay, all right.
You were hesitant to purchase?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But if the owner applies for the special permit under his current existing permit, special permit, an amendment to it? And then I buy the land, the land would, the permit would transfer the land according to the bylaws?
I guess that's a question. Does it trans, I don't know that it transfers with the new owner.
I don't think it does.
You just replace the bond.
But why couldn't we put that as part of the special condition?
We could. There's no reason we couldn't.
Right.
I think the, uh, on the, uh, special conditions will be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I, I apply for permits all over Massachusetts. Boston, little towns, and I just represent the owner. And in some places, they do ask for a letter. But in this case, he can, the owner can apply and then we, um, we say on the conditions that if he sells the land, the permit transfers to the new owner.
Well, and we, but we.
We would have to specify.
Andrew Murk. Andrew, so we specify.
Specify that if he buys the land, he gets it.
Special permit would tran, the special permit in your name would transfer to that, yeah, for the same, for the same use.
And then we would just replace the bond. Take his bond and then I'd give you a bond.
I think so, yeah.
I think that's the path we want to go.
Yeah. Can we address a couple of the other things that we're?
Yeah, we're getting there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. So I'm just going to summarize. So, um, we're okay with non-landowners applying, but we want some sort of documentation. Right, that that's okay with a landowner.
Right, from the landowner saying that they approved of this person applying one day. But they buy that basically, yeah.
So part of this is that we have a solar company that applied for a special permit on someone's land.
Right.
And they didn't even know that they had done that.
Yeah.
So.
There's a, there's an, in the application, there's a spot there for that and it actually requires it to be notarized.
Okay.
In, in the application process.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
So just do a letter anyway, just say.
Yeah.
That you, you're giving, you know, Andrew's going to be your agent.
Mm-hmm.
On the special permit and that you intend, if it goes through, you would intend to transfer.
Ownership.
The ownership of the permit.
I knew we're going to be doing, we put it in the special, the conditions.
Yeah.
I think that'll do it.
Okay. Okay, all right. So now we're on to, so we have this, next is the 727 Brimfield Road, informal special permit discussion.
Okay. I just, Ron Cox.
Yep.
Representing, obviously, 727. The last time I was here, it was a little harsh. And I did get you guys all a copy of what you approved.
Yeah.
And I also did, um, drive up and down just, just the gravel pits on Brimfield Road. The pit at 1456 is within, digging within 100 feet of the house. The pit at 1391 is less than 50 feet from the apartment buildings. The pit at 275, that pit is less than 100 to 230, to 321. And the pit at 177 is less than 100 feet at, to 163. They're all digging within that distance. I think what happened was that part of the law, you can't read just part of it. You have to read the entirety of it. And if you want to pull it up, it, it says within 250 feet if you're going to do any harm to the property next to you. So in other words, if you were working on a mountain and you were digging 250 feet away and it was going to cause it to collapse, if you look at the law and read what it said.
So you're saying in the bylaw?
Yeah, in the bylaw, the, the part that you guys grabbed the 250 feet from, if we read it in its full context, it's more to protect if there's any, to cause any harm. I don't remember the exact wording, but we're going to see it here in a minute. It caught me off guard the last time, that's why.
Okay, so.
Let's see, I've got it here.
So this is one, right? Operations within 200 feet of a way. The 250 feet of a building.
That's section eight?
Right, and if you continue on that, the board is reasonably satisfied that such operation will not undermine such way or building or other structures. So if you read it in its full context, it's not really 250 feet because everybody's closer than that. And we had discussed this when we got the original permit, that right behind our butters, the property drops like right off at like eight feet behind their house and then goes up to a knob. And that knob is what we were taking out. We weren't.
Okay.
So I just.
Yeah, okay.
Because we want to use the same plan, um, and, and finish that work, whether he owns it or, or we own it.
Wow, yikes, I don't know. My Gmail must have like blown up. I was going to try and pull up the, um. All right. I was going to try and pull up the, uh, stuff you had sent over.
Yeah, it was, it was the plans and everything that were approved. We discussed it all, um, whatnot. And then the only other thing I'd say is the pit at 1456 that you approved in '23. There's three people that own the company that's doing the work and there's a different landowner. So it's, it's already been done. That's, that's all. And obviously you agreed to that already, so.
All right.
I just didn't want to come before you for the other permit and have all these other things come up, especially when they weren't correct. You know, when, when we were discussing them, you didn't have the blueprints in front of you.
Okay.
There was, there was some misguidance or something. I don't know what to call it, but.
Yeah.
Just didn't want any, like, we did something wrong coming for a new permit and then have to rehash that out, that's all.
Okay. All right. And then one thing, so we got, it's one point, oh. So your original permit did not include rock crushing.
Right.
So if Andrew's going to do rock crushing, now you got to make, make sure that in the permit, you're asking for that.
Correct. Yeah.
We're amending, we'd like to amend the permit to include crushing of concrete rock.
Yeah, yeah.
Do, what, do we need all new plans or like, do you need all that stuff again? Because it's the same stuff.
We're going to utilize the exact same footprint that's currently used under the.
Well, I would grab those plans and like, where's the rock crusher going to go roughly?
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we'd want to have it at least updated for what you're going to be doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's easy. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Yes, we do, through the years on the planning board, we've seen all the pits being too close to the properties. That's why we ask and we implement it to not to be that close on the special permit. And to have a natural buffer of trees to protect the neighbors for that.
Okay.
So this is not, it can't be a case like, oh, because you do it, I can do it too. There was, those are old pits that, that we had in town. And because of that, we wanted to protect the neighbors.
Okay. So this one, are you looking for something or are you just making?
It's right, it's, there's no buffer zone.
Okay.
There's no buffer zone, it's right up there. I went today to see it and it's like, you could see the whole side, hundreds of trees down and the view from the neighbor is just like, like that.
Okay.
There's nothing. All the buffer zone is gone.
What do you think about doing something?
Well, that, they potentially could, it'd help both parties, us and the neighbor on the right. If you're talking about the one on the right, because we're very far away, the crushing would be in the major area that's.
Not the one near, near the neighbor.
But there's no trees currently.
There are no more trees anymore, they're gone.
Yeah.
All right, where are we here? Southbridge, oh no, Brimfield Road, right?
Mm-hmm.
727, zip right down, you can't resist it.
Yeah.
Now that hill's very sandy. I don't know if the trees would take to that.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, it's all sand.
The, if you look at the, the map with the elevations on it, behind those three buildings, it, it already drops down. And that's where we were going to match was that same level that's already there. We weren't going to cut it down any lower. It's just there's a knob of sand and gravel.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
So you trimmed it down to match like the rest of this or something?
Right, exactly.
To the grade of that road.
Yeah, and tipped the road back away from the brook. That's what you guys wanted.
Right.
When we, when we had talked about.
Where's the, the brooks, where?
To your right.
Where those trees are.
Yeah, over, between the two areas.
All those trees would stay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the crusher would be in the back.
Yes.
Yes.
Part of the area.
Where that current screener is on, on your picture.
So right down there?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can you kind of go look for the plan, please? Again?
I could, but there's like, this, my email is.
I know, mine too. I tried to forward to you and it says that there's something.
This bit you can't see from the road, where the others you can.
Right.
On the road.
This is, I don't have my phone.
See, that's the property line?
This is like not even my email.
That doesn't look like your email.
It's not, because I have a ton of folders for like all planning board stuff.
So if I try to look forward to you?
Uh, send it to, um, more dash MA.
Okay.
Select one.
I send it there.
It's not coming.
Oh, it takes a little bit, it's very heavy.
Yeah.
See the house?
I do, I do, because I already got to come out, so.
How good is our internet today?
It's not great, but it should have come by now.
Yeah, mine?
Yes.
My Wi-Fi is looking okay on the standard town hall Wi-Fi.
Yeah, but it's very slow. Very slow.
It's been, yeah, it's been bogged down.
Did you get it?
No. They fixed that bank, you're just like, join the tree?
Long.
Yeah. Of the, of the, where they said the trees.
Yeah, probably.
Oh, there it is. Down the trees.
Right.
Or it's still alive. Water. It just doesn't have it. DLTA and PDC agenda.
Is that the second one?
Oh, yeah, that was an update from today. Would have been the one from.
Yeah, I got it. It just ends up on the same one. Grab that one.
Oh, it's in the same thread.
So I tried, it's gone, I sent another one. It's on the same thread and pick up the last one instead of the first one. And this one is heavier.
Yeah.
It'll take longer, right?
There's a bunch of stuff on that one.
They're not very big, they're small stuff.
Technology. Just a little bit. It did leave yours, right?
It did. I mean, you can even see on the plan that, you know, the neighbor's house is not drawn.
Wireless agenda draft, this one probably, right?
Let's call it meeting, no, let's call it, it's after the meetings, the meeting minutes.
Yep.
There it is. And it's the, um, their name was out yet, though, 727 lots, two, lot one, lot two are the site plans.
Right, because we want to see the, uh, proposed area number one.
And they are way clearer than anything we have in on file, so.
And this one is just a Zoom version, right?
Yeah, you can do that one.
So the excavation area one, where is that in relation to? I go back to that.
Right there.
That's right there.
It's still this?
Yes, that.
Okay. And then this is the other area, right?
Yes.
Correct, and that's where the crushing operation would be in that area.
So where's the property line here?
Um, it's back quite a bit.
You mean this way?
Yeah. The, um, right there, actually, it's right in that line. There's, there's still trees at the end and, and if you look at the proposed map thing, there's a right of way that I think he might be confusing with trees that we cut down. But if you look to the left-hand side there, that's an actual right of way to, um, Warren's property across the brook. And that was, that was already cut out.
This here?
Uh, no, another one on the left, right on the property line. See where the red line stops before the property line? Yeah. Between the red line and the black line is a right of way.
Like here?
Yeah, exactly. All the way through and across is there. It's a 20-foot right of way for probably from 100, 200 years ago. And that's why it was already cut out and down and we were going to match that grade. We weren't coming like right up to the property line.
So here, where is that, like right?
Right behind like that white house down there?
This here?
Yeah. Yeah, it's to the right of that, just a little bit.
And this is a house?
Yeah, it's a house.
Yeah, that's a house, too. It's a.
That's the house I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay.
And you see trees there. I went there, I saw them.
Yeah, so they're all gone.
Look how close, if you look at the, on the drawing, how close it is to the, to the road?
No, there's probably a little less. Yeah, I don't know. It's gotta be close. Yeah, it's gotta be close, yeah.
Those trees are sitting.
'Cause the other screener is up top, yeah. So definitely, yeah, nothing was cut since then.
Change the view of the map instead of satellite where you could see the, the houses.
Like this?
Yeah. So what, whatever is between the shed and, and that great little driveway, all that is, it's gone.
That's where the right of way is. There was no, no big trees there at all.
What is this line here?
That's.
That's the property line.
Property line.
The shed's actually on, on your, on our property.
Yeah, a little bit, huh?
Yeah.
Well, they're not, you're right, and it's not drawing on this, so.
So you're saying that right of way was like through here?
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Okay, right along the property.
Mr. Chairman, I remember when we looked at this plan and I said specifically, please do not take those trees so the neighbor can have some buffer.
Okay.
Well, that excavated, it was trees.
Alright, I don't know, can you come up with something at least, uh, in the special permit request?
I mean, I wanna, wanna be held to it, but if it'd be my best interest, once I clean up that hill, to maybe put something there.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if it'd be a fence, or a book, or, or aberrations, or some sort. I don't know that answer yet.
Okay.
But I'd certainly entertain that down the road. I don't think, you know, no one's been complaining to Ronnie about.
No.
Well, that was my other question. No one's complained about?
No.
The visibility?
Actually, the, the guy on the furthest house, um, I did some work, just fixed up his driveway for him, and he's like, hey, there's like four more oak trees here, can you cut those down? 'Cause they're really tall and they're next to his house and he doesn't want it crushed. The only request I've had is cut more. But like, it's, I don't wanna cut it myself. I would have to have a professional and that would cost me money, so I'm just gonna leave the tree. Um, so, no, we've had nothing as far as complaints and, I mean, I, I took pictures of all the other pits on that road. There's no buffer on most of them at all. And I get the buffer, and obviously I think eventually some buffer would be good. Uh, just hold us to the same standards as everybody else. That's all. That's, that's all I'm asking for.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a perfect example of what happens when things don't happen the right way. Unfortunately, what they've done, it's irreversible.
Yeah.
We can't ask them, oh, plant trees, oh, put a wall, oh, there's nothing. It's just a lesson learned.
Okay.
Um, 'cause they did not do what we asked them to do, or vice versa, or whatever you wanna take it. And there's nothing we can do at it, to fix it.
Okay.
I, I think, I think we're just gonna have to swallow it and go for it, but the special permit, there are setbacks that we have been putting to other, um, pits, that if we apply them to here, that is not possible.
Okay.
They have to learn, know that, you know, when a special permit comes in, that won't be able to do it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we did permit it, so, and I don't know that we put, you know, in the special conditions or anything in here we did not say, which is another thing, if we're gonna say, don't remove trees, we gotta put it in here.
Right.
So that was, you know.
I know, that was.
'Cause we have nothing to go back to, you know.
No, I mean, slope it away from the adjacent stream and the building inspector will conduct a yearly inspection. Those are the only additional considerations, conditions. So that's on us.
Yeah, it's a perfect example when things go wrong. Unfortunately, we cannot do anything to fix it.
Yeah. Alright. But Andrew, if you could take a look at what the options might be, I would be okay with a fence, some sort of like.
I, 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 I'm afraid of speaking then without the owner of the property here.
Yeah, but if we do a special permit, they're gonna get notified.
They, they will get notified.
If they don't show up.
Yeah. But, you know, I just see it as a very, an example of when not, it can happen again.
Yeah, okay. Point taken, definitely. Alright. Alright, so any other questions?
No.
So, I, you think you're all set?
Um, well, one question, um, I've already started the process. I went to the building inspector and got the denial for the crusher. So if I just continue to carry through and, um, do it the same way and just say that the property will be, probably transferred to him, and the permit will stay with the land, is that, is that, can we do it that way?
Yeah, that's, so that's, so put that in a letter that you're requesting that.
Okay.
Then put in the letter that, um, until then, Andrew can represent the process.
Okay.
You, myself, or the owner?
Yeah, either one.
Okay.
Yeah. Just so when you fill it out, then we know that you let Andrew.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, as opposed to him just coming in and doing this and you don't have any idea.
Yeah, and then the only other thing you want is the, where the crusher will be located.
An updated site plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if you could on that site plan, look at what you could do for that neighbor.
Yeah, that hill, because it's dirt there, I may have to, over time, take all that dirt out to get it down to the road.
Okay.
And then address that, 'cause it's either gonna be offensive, like I said, it's my best interest to have a screen or trees there anyway.
Okay.
Uh, but it's not right of way. Can't do it on day one, 'cause I gotta take out that dirt and now it's not like I have the dirt sold or right of way.
Yeah.
It could take a little time, but my intentions are, the first dirt I move is that area one, clear that out, get that dirt. So I can widen it out so the trucks can get it by a little bit.
Alright. Um, you know, one option we might have is we say, you know, you'd have to have some sort of screening up by the time the permit renews. Which would be five years.
Well, you could make it a year. I mean, you could put something into it.
Yeah.
Could within one year.
That'd be aggressive, one year.
Something like that.
But, you know, they, they, permits go five years, my understanding.
And then you can get three.
Three-year, three, three-year extensions.
Extensions.
After that.
But after five years, that's the first one.
Right. See, a fourteen years.
Yeah.
Think we got it.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, you think, do you have everything you need now, I guess, to continue?
I believe so.
Okay.
Good, cool. Alright.
Alright, awesome.
So once you get your paperwork in, um, we could possibly start this in maybe February or?
Okay.
March or something? It just depends when, our schedule and when you get your stuff ready.
Because I believe the, the hearing notice needs to be published two weeks in.
Yeah, I need two weeks there, yeah.
Just sort of for planning on that. It has like a newspaper.
Yep.
Two-week publishing.
Okay.
Timeframe is there.
And then get back on the town meeting again.
Yeah.
So, before you get anything stamped by the clerk, just bring it to Laura.
Have her look at it.
Have her, yeah.
Make sure it's all squared away.
Okay.
Submit it, yeah.
Alright, awesome.
Thank you very much.
For the.
That's an old picture of Google Maps. It was full of trees.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, that's what is on here too.
The, the roadway that I'm talking about?
I can see the road.
Okay, you're, you're looking at the tops of the trees is what you, I'm, I'm not, the, there, if you go up there and look in that twenty-foot wide path, you will not see one stump in that area that was cut. It's not even, it's not even stripped off. That area's not stripped off.
Okay, I'm, I just don't, you know, we try to protect the greens in here. We try not to have this kind of business too close to the road or the neighbors.
Yeah.
And this is a perfect example.
I understand.
Of being so close to the road. I drove by today, I went to the site, you know, it's sad, you see all the trees on the ground and you see all the, the dirt and the neighbor has a beautiful view of the pit.
I don't remember that conversation and it wasn't in.
We can look at the video. I can go back in the videos and try to get it, but that's not my point. It's already destroyed. So I'm just trying to make this point in the meaning that this is a good example of what we not have to let it happen to.
Gotcha.
Because that's not right. You know, it doesn't, it's not right. We're trying to protect the neighbors, trying to protect the green in here.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, number seven, consider potential approval of a regional district local technical assistance accessory dwelling unit bylaw assistance, assistance project. Alright, so let me stop sharing. So basically, this is just to, we can get assistance from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to, to update our accessory dwelling unit portion of the bylaw. So it's pretty out of date. So, if we approve it and we have a, a letter sort of ready to go, right?
I have a, the.
That I can sign.
The templates that they provided me, I drafted it.
Yep.
Provided it passes, we can sign it. But if it doesn't pass, I won't go on the shredder.
Yeah. Good. So, is, is there a motion either way? Anybody, is there any discussion on this? I mean, I, it's.
It's gonna help us update the bylaw.
Yeah. It's a grant.
As far as, that's the end of the session. I don't really see any need.
And we need, it's, it's vastly out of date.
Yes, it is.
That section.
Yes, okay, alright. Okay, I'll make a motion. I, uh, make a motion, we approve the regional district local technical assistance accessory dwelling unit bylaw assistance project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ed Longigan, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richai Hacker. Okay, Richai Hacker, aye. Okay, we're all set with that. So number eight, consider potential approval of a regional district local technical assistance for regional hazard mitigation, planning, maintenance, and implementation. Same thing, it's a grant, they're gonna help us finish off, um, the hazard mitigation plan.
And this is separate from the, uh,
The hazard dam.
Grant project we discussed last time, which was specific to the hazard dam appendix.
Right.
To be put onto the hazard mitigation plan.
Okay, do this one more time. What is this?
This is to like, like sort of. Update and finalize the hazard mitigation plan. And then we approved something last time to add a whole new section to.
Right, okay, alright, okay. Like being in the army. Okay.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve a regional, local district technical assistance for regional, for regional hazard mitigation, planning, maintenance, and implementation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ed Longigan, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Okay, it passes. Alright, number nine, wireless tower modification special permit requirement.
Yeah, I saw this.
For this, I actually shot you guys an email. It's in the packets.
Yeah.
Um, it is the wireless zoning question. We, um, sort of in the building half of my, of my life, um, we actually received, um, a couple separate, applications for modifications to existing wireless towers.
Okay.
Um, uh, for both its, um, you know, replacing some equipment, um, at, you know, um, I believe both have adding a couple new antennas and sort of upgrading and replacing equipment. Um, same footprint planned, um, and no additional towers crammed in there or anything. Um, so the biggest question that the building commissioner had was, um, with it being a modification from the planning board's sort of point of view, is that something that, you know, he should automatically kick to planning for, you know, special permit review or modification or new permitting, or if it's, you know, the footprint is the same, sort of, good to go without looping in, sort of, just sort of, how, how would you all like to handle that?
Well, I guess if it's, if it's an equipment update, right, that's what they're doing?
And there is, I think where it comes to, uh, sort of a, a question additionally is, you know, well now there are, you know, there're going to be potentially like two or three additional antennas, so, sort of, how do you guys feel about that? Is that within purview of granted special permit? Or with an increase in some equipment, you know, do you feel it sort of needs to be revisited?
So here's the thing, right? Existing tower, this is from the bylaw, existing towers may be reconstructed, expanded, and or altered in all zoning districts subject to a special permit granted by the planning board, provided that they conform to all of the requirements set forth in this zoning bylaw. To me, that means if you change it, you need a special permit. Does, I don't know. Expanded and or altered. Doesn't sound like they're reconstructing anything.
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda what I would take it to. That you can do it, but you need a special permit.
Yeah. And my guess is, the intent of this was just to make sure that we have updated information on what's on that tower.
So, yeah, it seems like they would need a special permit.
Okay.
And so a special permit in addition, like a, a, a new or modified special permit in addition to their existing special permit, or?
Well, it would sort of just replace it, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah. What do you think, Derek? How do you read this?
Well, it does read like it didn't say any, any special permit. I'm, I'm just gonna encourage the, the, the board to think of that this is in benefit of the town, 'cause they put new stuff, new antennas, better service. Better business, right? The only thing I think, believe the permit is necessary is because, you know, obviously we will allow for a lot of things, but if something crazy, you put an antenna in the middle of town, probably won't work.
Right, yeah.
We need to have a little bit of control.
We need to, yeah, exactly.
Of what are they gonna do? We're willing to have it, we're happy that they're doing anything.
Right.
It's just, don't do something crazy, right?
Yeah, and it will benefit the town.
Sure.
But.
But we, we, we need to know. We need to know.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen.
Drew, do you have any comments?
No, I agree with Derek and.
Okay.
So we know what's going on.
Uh, do you represent Verizon, Verizon?
Yes, so I work for Aerosmith and I'm an authorized agent for Verizon, yes.
Okay, could you state your name and do you want?
Come over here.
Do you wanna comment at all, or are you just here to observe?
I mean, I was really just here to observe so that we can make sure that we're following whatever you guys need us to do. My name's Danielle Sabrin, work for Aerosmith. Um, we represent, um, Verizon Wireless. We submitted one of the building permit applications, so I just wanted to come and see, um, what you guys needed us to do. So the antennas that we're putting up, um, Verizon already has a center line on the tower. So it'll be on the same center line that they already are. Um, so it'll be within their current leased area. Um, I believe this is a, an industrial tower, they own the tower. Um, so Verizon leases space from them. There's no groundwork being done. They're just replacing radios, adding three new antennas, um, and I think one hybrid cable, if I remember.
Where is the tower located?
Um, I have the address.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think if they're just gonna touch the antenna, there's no need for it.
Yeah, but they're putting other new equipment in there too, right?
It's just new equipment.
So there's already antennas and there's already some other equipment, so we're adding three new antennas, but they're going on the same center line that they already are. So nothing else is changing other than, um, the antennas and the radios. It's off of South Bridge Road in Warren. Um, I have like the plans if you need them, but.
Yeah, it's literally off South Bridge.
That's like the.
Yeah.
It doesn't have like a.
Right, near Breezeland Orchard? Right, near Breezeland Orchard?
What is that?
Well, that's the only tower that's there.
No, we have a new tower right on, above my house.
Right.
Where the water, water tank is?
Tyler Park or whatever.
Oh, okay, so you know, is it closer to like downtown or is it way off in the, like the farm area?
That I don't know.
Could, do you mind?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. There, hold on, this is like. This is a smaller copy of the plans. This is.
Cause one of my breezels is a radio tower. I don't know if it's.
Oh, no, this is the, yeah, this is the one by your house.
Exactly, yeah, that's the new tower.
Yep, okay. So what's?
So you're adding three antennas?
Yeah, we're adding.
Updating the existing antennas and adding three?
No, we're just adding three new antennas, but we're also adding one OVP box, which is a smaller piece of equipment. Then we're swapping out six radios. So six radios already up there, we're just replacing them with newer models. And then adding a hybrid cable to connect to the equipment.
Mister Chairman, may I ask if by having this update, I'm gonna have signal of Verizon here in town?
It should help, it should help your service, yes.
Right now it's terrible.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, I can't take calls at home, I can't, you know, and I'm right.
Yeah, you're under the thing.
Five hundred feet from the tower. I can't, I don't receive text messages, everything I have to be, you know, on WhatsApp, you know.
Yeah.
Messenger and all that, and email, because it doesn't go through data.
Yeah, yeah, it should help your service, so they're basically upgrading it with newer equipment models. So they do these upgrades to help with service, yes, so it should, it should definitely help your service.
Okay, cause usually when I, when I'm on a, on a meeting at home and I have to go pick up my kids at school, it just. As soon as I go out of my house, it goes, there's no signal.
I can definitely bring that back to Verizon and their engineers and see if there's anything they can do.
That would be helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
I live further up than he does, a few miles past that. And same thing, I mean, on a cloudy day, I get no service.
I have to go all the way to the high school to pick up signal again.
Okay.
Verizon signal, data.
Okay.
Nothing in town.
Okay, I'm not an engineer, so I, I don't know, but I can definitely bring it up to Verizon, I absolutely can.
That would be helpful, thank you.
I work with the RF engineers and I can definitely.
Cause if you see in Facebook, people will ask, what, what company phone do you get so I can get signal? And anybody's like, maybe AT&amp;T?
Yeah, AT&amp;T.
I get decent service. Yeah, you get decent signal, but.
Yeah.
Verizon?
So if they're just doing that, then we need a permit.
Okay, so this triangle thing, this is like your mounting area? Right, that's where you.
So that's our center line, so that is like what goes around the tower and holds all the equipment. It's just like a, just makes it separate so you can see it easier.
So you're not adding a new one of these?
No.
You're just modifying the equipment that's on it?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I know the big question sort of on the building end was, it's not a strict, like, one for one, like there's going to be three additional antennas. How do y'all feel about that kind of thing? Because it's not a strict one for one replacement, but. It's also not an entirely new structure, entirely new format, footprint, height, anything, so it's sort of like that wishy washy.
Yeah.
Area.
So you're really just replacing the radios and adding three new antennas, right?
Yep, and then one OVP box, which goes with the rest of the equipment, it's a much smaller piece of equipment. And then the hybrid cable, which connects the other equipment.
And the, the other application that we received for a different company, for a different site, just coincidentally kind of came in very close to one another. Is very similar in that it's just equipment upgrade with, I believe. Again, three new antennas, so.
When, when they, when they say, an antenna is a big post that goes all the way.
An antenna is, it doesn't, so it's a smaller piece of equipment.
So you call it tower and then there are little antennas on there?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So if you're only replacing the little antennas over there, my suggestion is they don't need a special.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading this again, it's not being reconstructed, it's not being expanded. And it's really not being altered.
If you were gonna put another tower, then maybe we need a special permit, but if you're just replacing those, all the things.
Yeah, yeah, the tower isn't gonna change, it'll just be what Verizon has affixed to the tower.
So who has the special permit currently? Is it the tower builder?
I believe that.
I, there's a, I believe there's a owner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who puts it up?
Yeah. Industrial Communications owns the tower. Verizon may have needed a special permit to originally attach their equipment, I honestly can't remember. They didn't, okay. I didn't work on that.
What was there, there was only a, a permit to build a tower, and this is a long time ago.
Yeah.
On a private property, because we wanted it on the property of the tank. So it could be in our land, so we could lease to them, but somehow. Somehow ended on someone else's property.
Cause that tower isn't really that big.
No, I, I flew once with my drone and I could barely see the tip of it.
Yeah.
From my house, so there's not much to see, but that, that's what it. It happened on previous administration, I can tell you what, what it was.
I think on the drawings it might say how tall it is, I'm not sure, usually.
Oh, yeah, yeah, cause there's even height restrictions in the bylaw.
Okay, yeah.
So they had to provide a height at some point.
Oh, no, I meant on those drawings you have in front of you, sorry.
Oh, I see, yeah.
I, I believe it does say how tall the tower is.
How tall your stuff is?
It'll, it should say the whole, the whole height of the tower and then it will tell the center line of our equipment. It probably isn't on the first page, it's probably on the second or third page.
Yeah. Alright, well that doesn't matter.
Yeah, okay.
Just in case you need to know, but.
Okay, so I, if, if, if we agree there's no special permit, I think at least what we should do is get plans.
And.
Right, so.
Plans for both projects have been received as part of the building permit application.
Okay.
So I'm glad to provide that for planning board purposes as well.
As long as somebody has it.
But yes, there's.
As long as it's documented.
Plans were submitted on, on both cases.
Tower folder somewhere will be updated.
Yes.
Equipment.
Yep.
Cause I don't know, it may, may, may matter for like the fire department or something like that, they need to know if something happens to the tower.
They have a, they have a, 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 how to call it, those boxes?
Oh, the Knox boxes?
Knox box, yeah, to get in there just in case.
So if something happens, they can go and get plans and.
Okay.
Yeah, we always submit drawings and a structural with the building permit application.
Yeah, so we'll have it in building, we'll also, I can make a copy for the planning files.
So we have it.
Yep.
And off the record, please tell them. Tell them that I, I don't, I, I live just down the road and we don't get, have signal?
Yeah, I definitely will. Yeah, we work with the RF engineers, I can definitely.
That's off the record.
It's literally about a quarter mile away.
Okay, that shouldn't be happening, I could definitely check in with them about that.
Okay, alright, so I would like to see a motion for this, just because we're clarifying.
I make a motion that.
So.
Did, for these wireless tower. Equipment replacements and modifications, no special permit is required.
For the Verizon.
Yeah, Verizon tower, yes.
Okay.
Alright, and would you, just for clarification too, is that, so we have received.
Good for the other company too.
Yeah, we've received applications, they're actually both for Verizon towers oddly enough, just completely different. So one is the Verizon tower at three sixty-seven off South Bridge, which we've just been discussing. The other one is for the Verizon tower at two eighty-two Devil's Lane.
Oh, okay.
Which is an addition, like basically very similar, three new antennas and then some equipment upgrades and things like that.
Okay.
So, very similar.
Well, that'll help the Mass Pike, I don't know. Not gonna help you, it's too far away, too many hills in between. Okay, so you want to amend that for both Verizon?
How about I start from scratch, yes. That I make a motion, did. The wireless tower. Equipment replacements and minor modifications for the two Verizon towers do not need a special permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ed Longigan, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye. Alright, you're all set. So I think whatever process you've are going through, you're, you're good, just to work with Bill, the building inspector.
The building inspector, yes.
And I am also the building admin.
Yes.
I will, I will touch base with y'all and let you know, just sort of formally from the building end, once I'm off of, take off the planning hat. But we will be moving forward with everything.
Perfect, alright, thank you so much.
Do you want these back?
Thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you.
One quick more question. When do you, when do you think CD is happening?
I would say, so we need our building permit, and then we do have everything else we need, we just kind of been working on the permitting and making sure we don't need zoning. So I would think within the next few months, we should be able to, to pass this off to our construction team. And then it kind of depends on their schedules, but I would think relatively soon. If I had to guess, I'm not part of the construction team, but if I had to guess, I would say within the next four or five months.
So May?
Hopefully sooner than that, yeah. Just my guess, but. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, December ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for the December ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Ed Longigan, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Drew King, aye. Richai Hacker, aye. Minutes are approved. Bills and payroll, we have your payroll, were there any bills?
I have not received any invoices since our last meeting.
Okay, so it's. Really?
I'm just, I haven't particularly gone nosing around for any, but none have been received.
Okay, so all we have are payroll.
All we have are payroll.
She emailed to us.
Yes, I'm looking at it right now.
And I can.
So I'll await a motion.
Alright, well let me see how much that, twenty-seven, twenty-one, eighty-six. And what's the other one?
There are actually, I believe, I believe when I sent this, yes. When the, when the meeting documents went out, we had not yet done the payroll that was submitted today. So I have that in addition to the two I had sent previously.
Okay.
So there.
Just approve it all then.
Yep, so there are, yep, three pay periods.
I make a motion that we pay, approve the payroll for Laura for the last three pay periods, correct?
Yes.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ed Longigan, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye, approved.
You paid.
Any new business?
I'll, I'll move this, I have something, but I'm commenting this way.
Alright, any old business?
Yes, I wondered where we are on getting the updates on the solar fields, they're, the information.
But the, so the wording.
Yeah.
Letters have gone out to the most up to date information I can find regarding owners. You know, consulting several sources, so just waiting for them to trickle back, knock wood.
So none have come back, but they've gone out?
None have come back, yep, they've gone out. There were some updated owners and things that I chased down the info for. So hopefully we will be getting all the O and M reports or at least bounce back, dot, no person at this address. So I can troubleshoot from that.
Hey Drew, last year this, the letters had to go out twice, right?
I think they ended up going out twice and there were a couple of them that got like a certified letter at the end. And our, and they argued over why should we have to do this.
Yeah.
Alright, so when did you send them out?
Last week, I believe they hit the mouse today, the thirteenth?
Oh, okay, alright, so it's still.
Yes.
Alright, that's fine. It's gonna take at least thirty days, I'm sure, for it to turn around, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, any other old business? Three, two, one, okay, comments and concerns?
There you go. Have we received the plans for those guys on Main Street?
For the next gen parts place at three sixty-four Main Street?
Yes.
Just for the, so people know. We did not receive any of the sort of interior elevation floor plan, plans. Just be redundant.
We need to have in file the site plan with all the notes. And at least an floor plan with all their distribution.
Yes, so we have the site plan info and all of their exterior, you know, employee parking, loading area, things like that.
Same thing, but now inside.
Yep, we are still waiting interior.
Does it help giving them a reminder?
I, I have followed up, I will, actually I will give them another follow up, because I, the last I checked, they had not picked up. Their decision to bring to the registry of deeds, so. I.
Hold on to it until we get the floor plans.
Yep, okay.
And the other one I had, I don't know if it falls into planning board, but you know that house that got on fire over here in front of the.
Yeah.
I, I think I saw the door open. So do you know how they put plywood on the wall, on the doors, on the windows? The plywood on the front door, it's broken in half and the door is open.
Oh, somebody got in there maybe.
I can clarify, again from my other half of my, my work personality. Town administrator, I know fire chief, building commissioner, and I believe police chief are all in the loop on that. To address getting that secured up.
Okay.
And I believe, off the, off the top of my head, I believe it will, it's being addressed tomorrow. I believe was the, the last word, from the owner of the property, that they will be out to, to secure that. And if they don't, there are contingencies.
Because the house on the corner of Keys and South Bridge, where we walk, that empty house, that collapsed house?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've seen somebody at night walking in there.
Really?
Yeah, usually when I get in, when we got out of the, our meetings, and somebody there sneaking.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if it belongs, I don't think this belongs to planning board, but I wanted to mention it before I forget.
Okay. Yeah, again, I would let Chief Mallett know, I guess, if you've seen, cause they would be there to enforce it, yeah.
I just didn't wanna make the big deal and have them go and say, nobody was there or anything, but.
Yeah, well, it's hard, yeah.
It's very hard.
Versus when the police actually show up, right?
Yeah, and I, I think that's it.
Okay.
That's planning board.
Alright, our next meeting is January twenty-seventh, Monday. What, what do we have on the potential agenda? We'd have the. The bylaw with Jane's comments, right, CMR PC's comments.
Yes, so the continuing discussion on the Warren zoning diagnostic that CMR PC. Specifically Jane Wirick is working on. I re-forwarded, that's hard to say. It's a Word doc with comments for you all to review, and she will be joining us again on the twenty-seventh, just to go over that. You know, any questions, comments.
Did you want our comments in advance?
If it is feasible for you to provide them in advance, I can certainly share them with her. And I believe, you know, she's pretty easygoing, if you have, you know, a scratch pad that you have handwritten notes, I can scan that to her. If you, if you wanna do a track changes on the track changes, easy peasy, so. And then beyond that, nothing sort of beyond standard, you know, minutes.
Bills.
Bills and payroll, things like that, potentially an A and R, but, you know. None, none of the shoots so far, but one or two usually come up.
Okay, I've got a little, small project, this is actually kind of an old business, but. We had approved a special permit for Copart in West Warren. And we went through the process, they appealed, we worked out, you know, whatever, and the, it was settled. So they can't do anything right now because of the way the special permit is worded. I believe they can't break ground to maybe April or so, something like that. So could you call the general manager over there and just ask them? Do they anticipate starting the project? So you might wanna look up the, the permit, just so you're quickly familiar with it. Basically, they're adding another lobe. If you look at.
Another lot where they park stuff, whatever. His name, the guy who was here, the manager, his name was Pat Serra.
Yeah, he's gone though.
Oh, he is?
So Laura, this is Copart.
I've seen plenty of things that say Copart, so I'm, I'm, I can find the file.
Okay.
Easily.
So basically, they're adding. Yeah.
They're like a baseball bat.
They're adding like another lobe to their whole setup over here.
Right.
Um, and so that's what the project was, and, um, they can start that in March or April, I don't remember exactly, but basically when things start to thaw.
Yeah, I can check the special permit and see, you know, when they were given the go-ahead via, in that to break ground and see if they're actually going to meet that or be delayed.
Yeah.
It's actually twenty twenty-two when we approved it.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been a while, and they're going to need a pre-construction meeting, and we also need to hire a peer reviewer. So, um, we need to figure out when to start all that. I was thinking of using, um, uh, what is it, T E C?
T E C?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were pretty good.
But if we don't have a date, I don't want to call him, because he's always like, he's looking for like, okay, when it, well, he's looking for specifics.
He's an engineer.
Never has specifics. Okay. The other thing, under old business, um, did you, were you able to coordinate anything for a ZPT site walk so far?
Still.
Okay.
Cross checking nine million.
All right, that's fine, as long as you're on it.
I know, now that, now that I have wrapped up prepping for this meeting, I can jump back on into that, which is.
Okay, all right.
Scattered eight ways to the wind. Now I can drill down and.
And then you and I need to get together for the budget.
Budget, yep.
So either maybe this week or next week. When does it due?
Uh, February sixth.
So what do we have here? February sixth.
I need a couple pieces of info from the accountant, um, but that is literally just a matter of me going up to her office and leaning over lately.
Okay, okay.
So it's not complex info from her, so.
Yeah, okay, so when you get what you need, then get ahold of me.
Yep.
And if we do it, I might have time this week. I should have time next week. Um, and that's plenty of time before the sixth, right? It's a Thursday. Is that what you said?
Yeah, February sixth, which is a Thursday.
Okay. Yeah. All righty.
Okay, we'll make another motion.
What kind of motion are you going to make?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
Don't get too excited. All in favor?
Ed Landigan, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.